Okay, I'd like to bring this Temecula Planning Commission regular meeting of December 18th to order, our last meeting of the year. And we will have the flag salute, the last flag salute for the year and the last flag salute for Commissioner Ruiz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you guys would please rise, remove your hats, place your right hand over your heart, and join me here in the pledge. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Adam. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Charlie Trejo.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
And Chair Hagel.
Here.
All present?
All present. So we have no public comments tonight?
We haven't received none.
Good, then I don't have to read that, so we don't have to put you through that painful thing. Consent calendar, we do have a consent calendar, so I do have to read that. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 p.m. and submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. And we have the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Hi, man.
A second.
We have a first and second. Everybody in favor say aye.
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 So that's five to zero. So we do have two public hearings this evening. And I will read the public hearing notice. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition of the approval of the project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting or by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to the planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for the public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. So we will go on to the first public hearing, which is number two, long-range planning project number LR 24-0458, amending Title 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code to allow for an auto mall 10 acres or greater as conditionally permitted use in the community commercial zoning designation. Brandon?
Good evening, Planning Commission. As you all know, the city's municipal code regulates land uses within the city, and within those uses, automobile repair services and auto sales that are indoor permitted uses within the community commercial zone. And that community commercial general plan designation envisions retail uses in a 10-to- acre, 10-to-50-acre size in the community commercial zone, as well as our general plan policy 3.4 states that the city should take advantage of Temecula's regional capture of taxable sales and continue to establish Temecula as a retail center. So briefly, we're here tonight to continue to promote economic development in the city and change the municipal code to do so. What this proposed amendment would do is conditionally permit auto malls 10 acres or larger in the community commercial zone. The table in front of you is what the proposed amendment would look like in the municipal code, and ultimately, this does make this more consistent with the general plan designation and the goals of the general plan. Additionally, there's an additional definition of auto mall, and it says any area with multiple automobile or truck dealers. So this isn't one used car dealership or something like that, it's multiple users, and it would again have to be that 10 acres or greater to maintain consistency with the general plan. This project is exempt according to Secu Section 15061B3 of the California Environmental Quality Act because it can be seen with no certainty, there's no possibility that the code amendments would have a significant impact on the environment. And with that, staff's recommending approval of the proposed amendments. Let me know if you have any questions.
We will go with, start with our questions. Fernando, do you want to start?
Yeah, I have a question. On page number three of the report, and it says conditionally permitted if a planned auto mall is 10 acres. So is the, kind of the development standards of display area, street frontage, is that from the, from the auto automobile? Okay, so we're just adding that word in?
Great question. So those standards are all existing, none of the standards are changing, it's simply the title is changing so that we make sure that, as a planner would work through the document, they would see that those standards would apply.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
No questions? You have? Adam? No. So I guess my only question is, the real meaning of this is that since repair or sales is already allowed and would be allowed together on that property or on whatever property it may go to, that an auto mall require that it be more than one dealer? And that's the only real, real change?
The change is that this is now going to be conditionally permitted and that it would have to be in an auto mall, so it wouldn't be just one individual auto dealership, it would be multiple auto.
Right. Oh, okay. Anything else? Okay, and there's no speakers on this?
We have none.
Okay. Then I will not open the public hearing. Or I will open.
We can open it and close it.
Okay, I will open the public hearing and I shall close the public hearing. And any discussion? Adam? You have any?
No, no discussion. I was on the subcommittee, so got this in detail previously as well.
You're okay. Gary?
Yeah, no.
Fernando? No, I understand the purpose and I'm good with it as well, so.
So are you ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So I will make a motion to approve long-range planning project number LR 24-0458 as it stands.
Second.
A third.
Okay.
He wants to be involved tonight.
I'm going on record.
Would you release your second, Tony?
I'll withdraw my second.
So we have a first and a second.
Can we clarify? Oh, Watts, is that second?
No, Reese.
Adam is going to be the second.
I stole it from him.
Got it, okay.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? So it's five oh. We will go on to the next public hearing. Long-range planning project number LR 23-0494, a specific plan amendment to the Temecula Regional Center specific plan for a technical change to the document so that the square footage in the specific plan reflects existing conditions and entitled projects. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson and Planning Commissioners. As you stated, this is long-range project number LR 23-0494, the Temecula Regional Center specific plan amendment number four. So also, as you stated, this is specific plan amendment number four for a technical change to the document, so the square footage in the specific plan reflects existing conditions and entitled projects. Specific plan amendment does not propose any new square footage that is not already constructed, under construction, or entitled and vested. What entitled or vested means is you may have a project that was approved and only a portion of the project was built, but it has vested the rest of that project, so the square footage is still there and available to be used at a later date. So, a little bit of background, in 1994, the Temecula Regional Center specific plan was approved by the City of Temecula City Council, and the specific plan has since been amended in July of 1999, January of 2003, July of 2008, and then tonight. So in December of 2023, the City of Temecula initiated the specific plan amendment number four. So why did we do this? So, over the years, you know, we get pre-applications in, we get inquiries from people that just call the city. We want to do a t-shirt store, we want to do a restaurant, we want to do whatever at the mall. And staff has always been under the impression that there were somewhere between zero and 1,000 square feet that was available. But we didn't ever really know, because going all the way back to 1994, from then till now, stuff was done with paper, stuff gets lost, digital files weren't existing. So we got an inquiry from an applicant that said that they had done their own analysis, and there was 10,000-plus square foot available. Took us aback, so we figured, we need to do the analysis now. So starting in December of last year, we started doing that analysis, and I'll go in to show you exactly how we came to the numbers that we did. So that's the reason that we did it. It's pretty much had to, so we knew exactly what that square footage was for any future applicants that are going to submit on the project. So this is the specific plan area. You have the mall core and Main Street. So this is Costco in the bottom, Phil's BBQ, Carl Strauss and Benihana in the left. On the right, you have Islands and Chick-fil-A. And then in the top, you have Total Wine and Nordstrom Rack, just to get you a little orientation and give you exactly how big the specific plan area is. So in order to determine the existing conditions, entitled projects, square footage, staff did a couple different things. So we had to determine the location of planning areas one and two. We consulted with the prominent Temecula management in order to get gross leasable area data. We researched all the other existing building permit and entitlements in the specific plan area. Then we determined the percentage of buildings that are located along the planning area lot line, so it's not like a legal lot, it's just the area between, the line that's between the two planning areas. And then finally, we worked directly with Brookfield Properties, who's the majority owner of the mall core, to ensure the accuracy of that analysis, so that the city's on the same page with essentially mall ownership. So this is what we had to work with. We didn't have digital files, we didn't have CAD, GIS, we had a copy of a page from the specific plan. So using that, we created this exhibit. So you have planning area one is in the yellow on the right, planning area two is in the pink-purple on the left. How we came up with this exhibit was, we knew per the specific plan in the EIR what the acreages were of planning areas one and two. So planning area one had an acreage of 79.13 acres, planning area two had an acreage of 97.91 acres. So that was set in stone. So we had the line on the left exhibit, and then the acreage. So we worked with our GIS department to determine as close as we could get to that line, so you can't go, you know, if you shift that line on the northern part of the project, then you have to adjust it on the bottom, because you have to keep that acreage. So that's, those were our parameters. So what did we do? Again, we consulted with the prominent Temecula management for the gross leasable area data, so that's essentially everything inside of Ring Road. Then, we researched all the other existing issued building permits and entitlements in the SP area, so that's all the blue boxes you see on the outside. Each of those have a square footage that's assigned to them. Following that, we determined the percentage of buildings that are located along the planning area lot line, so you see how that red line cuts directly through several buildings. So if you blow that up, goes right through the middle of Edward Cinema, so we worked with GIS to determine that 85% was in one planning area and 15% was in the other planning area. Another one was Lazy Dog, 74% is in one planning area, and 26% is in the other planning Following that, we did our analysis, we got the numbers that we were comfortable with, we reached out to Brookfield, their team, they have, you know, worldwide company, they have a whole analytical department that we are working with. So from June of this year until October of this year, we worked directly with Brookfield to ensure the accuracy of the analysis. We weren't going to bring it forward to Planning Commission and then ultimately until, to City Council, until everyone was on the same page. You know, we couldn't come with a number and then Brookfield send a representative and say, "We don't agree with that number." So we had to be in agreement. So once both parties accepted that analysis, the specific plan amendment was scheduled for public hearing. So what are the results of that analysis? So in planning area one, there's an allowable gross leasable area square footage of 1,055,000 square feet. To date, 680,100 square feet has either been built or entitled in that planning area. So that leaves 374,900 gross leasable area remaining to be built. And we always knew this was going to be a big number, that's where Bill Bellagio is, there's a lot of room to do stuff there that's imagined in the future. So it was planning area two that we knew that was either close or over or under that we just weren't sure of. So in planning area two, 1.375 million allowable gross leasable area square footage is allowed. To date, 1,40754 square feet have either been built or entitled in that area. So that gives us a number of 34,754 gross leasable area square footage that's been overbuilt. So keep in mind that this has been done over time, you know? We are here to rectify that number, set a new baseline, any time for any appeal on any projects is well passed, so you know, you can't go back, you can't put mitigation measures now for things that happened in the past. So moving forward, planning area one, the 1,055,000 square feet remains as the baseline. In planning area two, 1,409,754 square feet is the new baseline. So then moving forward off of that, projects within either individual planning area that propose new square footage that exceeds the revised baseline square footage shall be required to perform an environmental analysis based on the California Environmental Quality Act We did take this to the PC Subcommittee on November 14th of this year, we presented it to Commissioners Hagel and Solis. At that meeting, we had a discussion on what was the need for the specific plan amendment, the process, research, and the analysis involved in that, and then the results of that analysis. Terms of environmental, it's also exempt from further environmental review for Section 15061B3, as it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the adoption of the resolution may have a significant effect on the environment, because as previously stated, the specific plan amendment does not propose any new gross leasable square footage area that is not already exist or is entitled and/or vested. So with that, staff does recommend the Planning Commission adopt the proposed Planning Commission resolution, recommending City Council approval of the Fourth Amendment to the Temecula Regional Center specific plan. That concludes the presentation, and there's a lot of information in there. I'm here for questions, and then we have Jaime and Michelle here, as well as, they're really the ones that did the analysis.
Thank you, Scott. That was very thorough. We'll start with questions. Commissioner Solis? I'm sorry. The other direction.
Here, forgot your name.
Thank you. And thanks for that, because when I was reading through, I was a little confused on some of the numbers. So just really to clarify, the 34,754 that shows is overbuilt, that's already either built, vested, and titled, that's not, that's not a new number. And changing the baseline for this does not have any impact on someone that was denied or would have had a problem with exceeding that baseline before because that time period has expired, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And if someone would have brought this to us two years ago, we would have done this analysis two years ago.
Right. I just want to make sure that changing it doesn't have that impact back on someone else, it's all, we're all fully protected over.
Yeah, in the staff report, I tried to keep it, because there's so many numbers.
Yeah.
Like more, like 30,000 level, because I knew we would drill down on it more here tonight.
Yeah. No, and it makes sense, and you know, we, I've been part of a lot of these kind of things that just need cleaned up or straightened up over time, and I commend you guys for taking a sketch drawing and trying to determine what that, what that looks like, but this all makes sense to me, thanks for the clarification.
The one initial note I'll say is, in the staff report, there was the specific plan amendment that had the table and everything in there, so that will actually be the piece of paper that gets slip-sheeted into the specific plan, so digital, and we still use hard copies here. So when planners in the future, that's the first page they'll see when they open it, so they understand what's going on.
So that's where the Plan Two, Plan Two will go to the 1,049?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz.
First of all, I can see why it took a year to do this. Oh my goodness, that's a lot, that's kind of crazy. So I thought I understood it, but now I kind of have a question. So planning area one has a lot of square footage remaining that can be built. Planning area two has a little bit.
Has zero. It's overbuilt by 34,000 square feet.
Overbuilt, right. But you changed the allowable to make, to make, okay, all right, I got it. So, so that it's not overbuilt now, now it's right there.
Correct.
Got it.
So from staff's point of view, it didn't matter to us whether it's 1,000 feet over or 60,000 feet over, because we're just going to set the new baseline.
Right. Right.
But we had to, in order to get Brookfield on board with us, we had to do the analysis to figure out the exact number.
Can you pull up the two planning areas again, if I can just see? Okay. So planning area two is the one that's maxed out?
Correct.
All right. Oops, because you were saying Bellagio has room there to do other things. Okay, all right. Yeah, I think that's clear now. Thank you.
Gary?
Just a quick question, Scott. On the, on planning area two, we're built, we're maxed out, we have a new baseline number for that area. If in the future, someone comes forward and would like to request additional square footage developable in that area, would we have to come back and do a specific plan amendment again to do that, or would it not be allowed at all? Or could you briefly just?
Great question. So, whatever. A couple of years ago, there was a t-shirt shop that wanted to go into one of the parking lots. So they were going to be on the hook for the development plan for the building, the specific plan amendment, just as you said, to revise the specific plan for the allowable square footage, and then the environmental review that would come as part of that. So all three of those. So they would have to go to Planning Commission and then also to Council as well because of the amendment to the specific plan.
Great. So it is in the future, it has a possibility to be flexible and changed. Thank you.
Commissioner Solis?
No question, I was in the subcommittee meeting.
Two things. One, has any of the other passed amendments to the specific plan dealt with any of this issue?
The, the square footage in the specific plan today is the original square footage from when it was adopted in 1994.
Okay. And the second item was the, the Plan One and Plan Two, the line that's been drawn now is, that's really becoming part of this as well, so we are, we are determining what that line is for the future?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's a given now, so, okay. Okay, I don't have anything else?
Yeah, and I would just add.
Yeah.
So I'd like to commend our staff for the analysis they've done pulling this together. It's about accuracy, transparency, but what they've done is they've gone from a bubble diagram to very specific, a very specific line based on the acreages that were identified in the specific plan at the time. So this new baseline is accurate.
Can I ask you some weird question? Why not just move the line? If, I mean, if you're adjusting something in a specific plan, was that, was that ever considered?
Again, we knew what the acreages were in each, in each area.
It's because of the acreage, then, the acreage is what?
Correct. That's what we had to work with.
That was the controlling factor. If you move the line, it changes the acreage.
All right, okay, so the acreage.
And it goes beyond that. If you move the line, now we've got to get agreement from every single property owner within the specific plan, planning area one and planning area two, to do so, and there's no incentive for those on the east side of that line to agree to that.
Okay.
I gather the plans were created before the Ring Road was even built, so.
Yeah, if you actually look in the specific plan, the way the mall actually ended up being built, doesn't even look like the specific plan. And Commissioner Ruiz, the line was one of the hardest things we had to get Brookfield to understand.
Yeah.
They were, they kept trying to adjust it, we're just like, you can't touch the line.
It makes sense, it just seemed like it was somewhat arbitrary, maybe that would have been easier, but it's, but I understand the acreage part of it.
Yeah, you had to make the acres work, so.
Yeah.
So I mean, we also took the specific plan, as Matt was calling bubble diagram, though, and, I mean, it didn't provide an engineered meets and bounds or type of line, but at the same time, it provided a pretty specific line between planning area one and two and very specific acreages, so then we just worked with GIS to make sense of that, and it really, in the end, wasn't that complicated. It's just that it doesn't line up with the Ring Road, so you got to forget about that and just look at the planning area one and two boundaries.
Well, that makes sense, and the only reason I brought up moving the line is just to not split some of the existing buildings. Would have that have made an easier sense to do, but understand the acreage restriction.
I think the reason the acreage matters so much is because the specific plan doesn't allow for, for shifting in square footages between the two different planning areas, and that's why we're stuck with what the acreage was.
Okay, is there any public speakers?
We have none.
Okay, I will open up the public hearing, I will close the public hearing. And any other discussion? Motion?
I'm just glad I'm not a planner and I had to do this. Yeah, I would like, do you want to make the motion? This is your last.
Tell you what, I'll make the motion only if Commissioner Watts is agreeing to second the motion that was approved, since I stole from him already, so.
Absolutely.
Then I, then I would like to move the approval of item number three, long-range planning, project number LR 23-0494.
So that's a first, and?
And I would like to be officially recognized as seconding Commissioner Ruiz's last act as a planning commissioner, at least for now. Second.
Forgive us, we don't usually have this much fun, but it is holiday time, so. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Five zero? Five zero, and that motion carries. And we will go on to the commission reports. Anybody have any commission reports? Anybody attend anything? Go ahead.
I was the only planning commissioner at the parade, Mr. Solis. And we were supposed to have a float this year. You just like left me high and dry, I want to say. But.
Did you walk it?
No, no, I watched it. But this is the first time I've ever been to the parade, and it's been balmy. I was like, it's not cold. I'm usually freezing. So that was really fun. It was really, and I've never seen so many people there. It was like eight, nine people deep, like watching. So it was pretty cool. It's, it's pretty cool to be a part of that small town parade. So you guys missed a really fun night. Next year maybe, huh? Don't be.
If my wife doesn't make me go to Vegas, then.
Oh, it's Vegas again?
He was building a house, so he has an excuse.
And I was building a house.
Okay, all right. Anyway, that's where I went. It was great. So city does it right.
Yeah, I don't want to step on your role here, Bob, as the chairperson, but I would like to thank Commissioner Ruiz for his service on the commission, and we wish you the best of luck. You've been a very valuable member, and your input has been very impressive. I've been very impressed with your preparation, and I know you're a busy man, so we appreciate your, your service. And then the second thing I'd like to thank, Bob, we're going to be voting next month for new positions here on the board, and I just want to say you did a great job this year. And if you get reelected, we'll do it again. But anyhow, I did want to compliment you on your, your first year as, as the chair and the great job you did.
Thank you.
And that's my report. Thanks.
And Adam, we will miss you. We really will miss you. So it was a very quick three years. Very quick. Anybody else?
Well, yeah, I was kind of hoping, hoping to go last because I do, I do want to thank all of you guys, both, both the commission colleagues here and, and staff. It has been extremely enjoyable on, on this commission. You know, I started on Committee Services Commission, and I knew coming over here, things were going to be a little bit different in their own sense, and I've really enjoyed every minute of it. I was just sharing with Laney, you know, the ability to come back and look into, oh, I had a say on that, or I had a participation in that is, is, it's valuable. And it's nice to see how things operate on this side as well. Staff, you guys have always done a great job answering questions, helping me get better prepared, I think, for the meetings and explaining things very thoroughly. So I appreciate that. And the amount of knowledge trying to pick up, you know, that first year was like, okay, fire hose, there's a lot going on. And, you know, just like you said, a couple of short years later, kind of feel like things are starting to, starting to make a little bit of sense here. And it's, it really has been enjoyable. I may see you guys from the other side, or I'm not going anywhere. I'm still going to be around. But I've really, really enjoyed my time here on the commission. It wasn't an easy decision, but I think it is the right one for what I need to do right now. So just want to thank you all again, commissioners and staff, for allowing me to serve with you guys.
I also went, I did not get to the, the parade because I had another thing that night. But I did go to the tree lighting and the opening of the rink, which was absolutely just phenomenal. And one of the things that I think I really appreciate this year is with these events is the opportunity to get out and be with our own our own neighbors and people that we represent and get to talk to them and enjoy their company and have some fun together and have a little hot chocolate together. So it was really, really a great time. And I will say that the, at the rink, I was very surprised. They did a number of different skaters, had the opportunity to perform, and all did a great, great job. And then the, the race with the city council was hysterical. And they, they certainly had a good time doing it. Nobody got hurt, so. Okay, next. Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I kind of already thanked Adam, but we're kind of in buddies here this year, so I'll miss him. We've been passing dark chocolate back and forth. And I too appreciate your professionalism and your comments and, and how you prepared for the meetings. And, and I know that it's been hard with your work to be here all the time because of being out of town. So I appreciate you being prepared when you're here and also reading reading the, you know, the minutes and everything when you weren't here and knowing what was going on. So I feel like even when you weren't here, you were involved. And so I appreciate that. I know that's not always easy to do because we are basically volunteers. We're public servants, and we chose to be. And so I'll miss you right here. So don't have too much fun without us. We're kind of fun here. Even though Bob says we're not, we are kind of fun here, so. Okay, I know.
Any Subcommittee reports? Any new ones? No? Good. Community, yeah, Community Development Report. Anything going on?
Yeah, I have a few items. The first thing I want to do is just say thank you for all that we accomplished in 2024. It's been amazing working with all of you. I accepted the position of Director in May, and it's certainly been a pleasure working with all of you. I wanted to say too, the City Manager's Office asked each department to provide a summary of all of our accomplishments. And I think it's important that as a commission, you reflect on some of the things that you accomplished. So I'm just going to read through the list, and I think you'll be pleased with a lot of the stuff you've worked on. So I'll just go through this quickly. Six buildings for the Mountain View Industrial Buildings in the Business Park. Los Haciendas was an affordable housing project consisting of seventy-seven units. You worked on Heirloom Farms and Prado and Solano Winchester over at Harveston. Somers Bend, the buildout, and then you worked on Shawwood, which was a new construction technique from Japan. That was the first type of production in all, not only Southern California, but I think the U.S.
Which they are getting close to buildout.
They are. Yep. Vine Creek Apartments was an affordable housing project consisting of fifty-nine units. You worked on the fifty-room hotel south of Old Town, the Temecula Resort and Spa, three home product review applications at Altair consisting of four hundred and sixty-seven units, the tentative track map for Paseo at Temecula Parkway and Butterfield Stage Road, the Paradise Chevrolet Fleet dealership, Hawaiian barbecue in Better Buzz, the alcohol ordinance and the live entertainment license, and the joint workshops with the City Council, the pilot program for outdoor entertainment in Old Town, and then there was a community wildfire protection plan. So there was a long list, but I just, those jumped out at me, and I think it's important to reflect on all the good things you worked on in 2024. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The other announcement I have is that I want to say thank you to Commissioner Ruiz and in appreciation of your dedicated services, Planning Commissioner, to the citizens of the City of Temecula. We have a plaque. Yeah, again, thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you. We appreciate your professionalism, and you will be missed. And then finally, just a couple of housekeeping items. A new requirement for 2025 is we're going to be, we're wanting to update Commissioner photos. So if some of you have signed up, others have not, please, we do want updated photos of all the commissioners, so.
Is it your, is it an Olin Mills glamour shot?
We'll see.
Is it a good one?
Let's get the new photo, and then we'll compare, and then you can fight with HR over the photo we use. Yeah. So please work with Denise to get signed up. And then the last thing is from the City Clerk's Office, there's a requirement for ethics training by the end of the month. So by the thirty-first, there is a link. You receive an email. Adam, you don't have to do it, but the rest of you, done anyway. So if you could please take care of that. Yeah. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ron?
Good evening, everybody. Well, it's been a great twenty-four working with all of you. And Adam, it's been great working with you. Certainly miss you from the public works side. But you know my number, so call me if anything's going on around the city. So a couple of items, just because I'm not sure when we're going to get together in January, I wanted to make sure the commission knew that the, in January, the Winchester northbound on-ramps are going to be shut down. So those go into effect on January fourteenth. So that will allow for the construction of the, what we call the CD lanes, the collector distributors. And the first part of that is the slip ramp. That's the, what you would call the westbound on. As you approach from Yenez, you, that ramp there is going to be closed at Winchester. So as I've said before, the detour will state you need to go back to Rancho Cal and then get back on and go north, but we know traffic will find its way. So through other means to get northbound if that is the case. So I want to make sure you guys knew that is coming. That's a major detour that's happening, starting in January for a month. But the rest of the project has gone very, very well. So this is just a little pain that we have to endure to finish this project.
Quick question. When does, when does signage go up for that? Because I feel like the city's done a really good job. I know Christine made a video, and it's been shared a bunch on social media. But I, I'm off of Winchester, so I've told people about it too, and people are still acting like they've never heard it. So how early, how?
Yeah, the social media, the social media blasts have been going out. So that, you know, if people are following that, they've had that notice. The signs itself, probably right after the holidays is when those, those will go out.
Okay, so there'll still be some.
Oh, yeah, there's going to be CMS boards. They'll bring everything. Yeah.
Everything. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So I just had a job in Hemet probably about a week or so ago. And I, you know, so I went east on Winchester. And when I came back, which was probably, I don't know, ten o'clock in the morning, it was like, I mean, Winchester was backed up to like Benton. Like stopped.
You were coming back towards.
Is that normal?
That, yeah, that, that is.
So now Winchester's going to be closed, and it's, and it's going to be like, wow, right?
Correct.
Wow.
Yeah, so we will be sending traffic, you know, like I said, back to Rancho. But most people using Google, Waze, whatever they're going to use, we're going to inform those apps that this is happening. And then people will be directed to probably the best, most efficient way to get through the city.
I was just surprised that at that time of day, it was backed up that far.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of morning peak traffic for commuters coming from the Winchester-French Valley area, trying to hit the fifteen to either go south or north.
But like ten o'clock in the morning, you know what I mean? Like you wouldn't think, you'd think by then it'd be done.
But traffic coming through will not be obstructed from going southbound. So that's the good thing, which most of the movements coming from French Valley are going southbound. Okay?
Yeah, I guess to solve the problem, we have to endure the pain, so.
Yes, a little bit of pain.
No choice.
Little bit of pain. And then just on a sad, somber note, I know, you know, Bob, you came from the Traffic Commission. We had a sitting commissioner pass away. That was Brad Sullivan. And Brad Sullivan passed away last Friday, and so we just wanted to make sure that, or at least we were informed last Friday. So tomorrow, we do have a Traffic Commission meeting. Obviously, we'll close in his honor. But just wanted to make sure the commission knew that, yeah, that was sad news to hear he had passed away. That's it.
Yeah, Brad was a, was a great guy, so. Well, I just wanted to, thank you, Ron. I just wanted to end with saying that how much I appreciate the staff and all the work the staff has done this year. It made our job a lot easier. You've always come well-prepared. All the times that we come to you with questions and issues, we get your full attention. And I think we, it's something that we appreciate very much. It's not something that happens in every city, and we're very aware of that, particularly, you know, having attended the APA meeting. I certainly heard lots of complaints from people regarding what went on with their city councils or what went on with their staff and not paying attention to, you know, people's needs. And that's certainly not an issue that we have here. So I'd just like to thank you all and say I appreciate it. And we did have another passing yesterday. Joan Sparkman, who was the spark of Temecula and the whole entire region, passed away. And I'd like to close this meeting in her memory. So with that, we have, do we have a planning meeting scheduled for January? January fifteenth. So I will close this meeting till January fifteenth. Yes, yes, for quite a while, so.